Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everybody, to our October school meeting. I will be running this meeting as Mr. Words will not be here today. So let's begin saluting the following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Wondgren, here. Mrs. Jacobin, here. Mr. Cormack.
Here.
Mr. Croun.
Here.
Mr. Merkelgum.
Here.
Mrs. Rash.
Here.
Mrs. Torino.
Here.
And Mr. Words. Thank you. We'll start with my report for this evening. Thank you for attending the board meeting this evening. Over the past month, as always, our staff and administration have been working hard at enriching our students' lives through education. If you are unable to attend our committee meetings this month, I'd like to take a moment to highlight some of the excellent work that was presented and discussed. At our personnel committee, they continue to focus on strengthening our teacher pipeline, including a new partnership with the board, which you will be hearing more about later. The facilities committee remains committed to ensuring, among other things, the safety of our bus routes. Meanwhile, our curriculum committee has been busy addressing several important initiatives, including middle school scheduling, high school dual enrollment, elementary science, and curriculum renewal cycle. The student services committee hosted a presentation from our district's three social workers, who shared valuable insights into their roles and responsibilities. I also want to take a moment to address the ongoing budget challenges we're facing this year. The delay in the approval of the state budget has had a direct, significant impact on our district's finances. Typically, we receive state funding shortly after our budget is approved. As of the end of this month, we would normally have received over nine million dollars from the state, as well as between thirty-six thousand to forty thousand per month in interest earnings. These are critical resources that we currently do not have access to. While we remain hopeful that the state budget will be approved soon, we must continue to work within our current constraints. Our finance department will closely monitor the situation, and regular updates will happen during our finance committee meetings. So I encourage everybody to tune into these meetings, as they will likely be important discussions regarding potential adjustments to our budgets and programs. On a lighter note, I had the privilege of attending this year's PASA/PSBA School Leadership Conference. Over the course of two years, I was joined by Mr. Words and Mr. Merkelgum in participating in more than twenty educational sessions, covering a wide range of topics, including mental health support for parents and students, the power of a positive team, policy governance, elevating leadership through effective communication, bridging the governance gap, school law updates, and creating a culture of learning amongst many others. Each session provided valuable insights and practical strategies that will undoubtedly benefit us as school board members. In addition to these sessions themselves, the conference also offered a wonderful opportunity to connect the fellow board members from across the state, exchange ideas, and learn how other districts approach their governance and leadership. Overall, attending the conference was an enriching experience, and I look forward to applying what I learned to support the ongoing efforts and responsibilities as a school board director. On behalf of the board, I want to express my sincere gratitude to administration, faculty, and staff for their unwavering dedication to putting their students first. Thank you. Next, we move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Varios.
Thank you, Ms. Torino. Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, tonight, I need to start my report on a somber note. It is with deep sadness that I share the passing of two remarkable former staff members who were impactful to the Penbridge School community. Recently, Mr. Bob Hoser, who dedicated forty-nine years to Penbridge as a social studies teacher and a coach of multiple Penbridge sports, passed away. He's remembered for leaving an indelible mark on countless students and athletes. Within the last few weeks, we also lost Ms. Chris Wampole. Chris served in the guidance office of Penbridge High School for over five years before working as an assistant to one of the vice principals for more than fifteen years. Staff at the high school described her as, quote, "the heartbeat of the main office and the glue that kept this place together for many years," unquote. We wanted to take a moment to recognize that they truly embody what it means to be Penrich proud. So at this time, I'd ask for a brief moment of silence in their honor and memory. Thank you. We wanted to start our celebrations tonight by congratulating and encouraging everyone to cheer on both of our playoff teams. This week, our girls soccer team will continue their postseason run as they compete in their third playoff game tomorrow at 7:00 PM at home. The girls were the number-one seed in District One Tournament, and we hope to see everyone here tomorrow night as they take on Lower Marion. We're also excited to celebrate the continued success of our football program, which is also the number-one seed in District One Playoffs, something they haven't done since the year 2000. Our Rams won the suburban one national title last Friday night when they defeated CB South and finished the regular season with one of their best records ever, nine and one. One of my favorite experiences of this fall sports season, attending these games, is watching our students and community members rally around our students, teams, clubs, and activities to create an electrified atmosphere. There are so many moments to point out, but one of the more memorable ones happened a few weeks ago during a paint-out football game when a local pilot performed a flyover of the field before kickoff to drop paint chalk over the field. Will Durstein created a new experience in honor of his wife, who battled and beat breast cancer, as well as to honor our newly invigorated school spirit. Furthermore, we also have a Ram who makes a periodic appearance. His name is Cyrus. He'll be there Friday if you have met him. Unfortunately, Mr. Durstein was unable to join us tonight, but we will ensure he gets a certificate, and we thank him, and I just wanted to thank him publicly for his service. We're also excited to start tonight's meeting with the celebration of our students, staff, families, and the programs that make Penbridge an outstanding school district. This evening, we are joined by Mr. and Mrs. Taurus and their three children, Molly, Jack, and Grace, if you would like to come forward if you're here. Their oldest son, Brody, is a freshman at University of Georgia, so he couldn't make it tonight. On October 1st, Tabor Farms invited our Life Skills, NDS, and Autistics Board three students to the farm for a community-based instructional experience. Students enjoyed a hayride, picked apples to take home, and learned firsthand about agriculture. What stood out most was the care and thoughtfulness that went into making the day inclusive for all. Tabor Farms even constructed a custom ramp to ensure the hay wagon was wheelchair-accessible, allowing every student to participate. It was really touching to see that. We are appreciative of the Taurus's family's ongoing support of our students and their commitment to making Penridge stronger and a more connected community. It's my pleasure to formally recognize them this evening for their kindness, creativity, and commitment to inclusion. So we have a certificate for you, and we thank you. Thank you very much.
Good job, Monty.
More than a hundred and fifty parents, educators, and community members recently attended the latest session in Transforming the Stigma, Building Mental Strength for Life Series, our ongoing initiative to break down barriers around mental health and provide practical tools for well-being. This year's first event featured peak performance presented by Karan Foundation and funded through Bucks County opioid settlement dollars, which explored the pressures of student athletics and strategies for supporting mental health on and off the field. iSmart for caregivers led by Nova addressed the impact of digital life on youth, including social media risks and fostering open communication for safety and resilience. Additional presentations by Nick M. I. of NAMI, Bucks County, and Keely Rosenthal of Bucks County Emergency Court Services emphasized the importance of understanding mental illness and building protective factors for children and adolescents. The Transforming Stigma Series launched in the fall of 2024, continues to build momentum in promoting community-wide mental health awareness. I would like to recognize and thank Mr. John Johnson and his team for coordinating this initiative. Next statement I'm going to make is about transportation. I hear you. I'm getting through it. Penridge is a large district, both in student body and geography. We cover nearly ninety-five square miles, and one of the most significant services we provide to families each day is transportation. Our transportation department safely transports nearly five thousand five hundred students to and from school each day. Of those, fifty-two students are transported outside of district boundaries due to specialized program needs, and additional six hundred and seventy-one non-public school students are transported to schools within a ten-mile radius of the district. This past summer, our transportation staff completed a full district-wide rerouting of all bus runs and implemented community stops. Let me take a moment to explain why this change was necessary. Before the pandemic, Penridge operated ninety-five bus routes and employed more than one hundred bus drivers. During the pandemic, like districts across the nation, we experienced a significant loss of drivers, and very few new drivers entered the profession. As a result, our team had to make continued route adjustments and consolidations to ensure we could cover all runs safely and efficiently. We also worked closely with Bucks County Intermediate Unit to provide out-of-district transportation when needed. Over time, we reduced the total number of routes to sixty-two to match our available workforce. At the same time, transportation demands have increased. We've seen a rise in homeless students requiring transportation back to Penridge from temporary housing locations, more dual-household routes for students with shared custody agreements, greater specialized transportation based on student needs, and, most recently, expanded transportation for full-day kindergarten. To put our local experience in context, the shortage of school bus drivers remains one of the most significant workforce challenges in education. Nationally, employment of K through twelve bus drivers declined by more than fifteen percent compared to pre-pandemic levels. Surveys indicate that more than ninety percent of school districts report driver shortages, and many continue to operate below staffing capacity. In Pennsylvania, the number of licensed school bus drivers has dropped by several thousand over the past five years, with statewide shortages estimated between twenty to twenty-five percent. Still, we face operational challenges such as longer ride times, late arrivals, and logistical issues that affected extracurriculars and athletic transportation. As your superintendent, I want our community to know that both the administration and the board have worked hard to strengthen recruitment and retention of drivers. The board has increased driver pay. Our Human Resources Department and transportation staff have participated in job fairs, and we have conducted on-the-spot interviews to attract qualified candidates. Our goal has always been clear: to provide safe, reliable, and efficient transportation for all of our students. I felt obliged and compelled to share that statement. I know it was long, so to our students, thank you for hanging in there. Next up, I'd like Mr. Tim Keddie to come to the left there for a few announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Varios. I did notice that Mrs. Taurus and Jackie guys came in. All right, so what we're gonna do is you can just hold on for one second, because I got a lot of excited people here that they wanna kind of celebrate. But if you want to come on when we do that, we'd appreciate that as well. So we always knew it was an incredible event, and one of our best events throughout the course of the year. But now, the entire state will know about our April Shower event, because our version of a rain rally will be the models for others to follow. This is where you're supposed to put the video on.
Thanks for stretching.
The rain rally is one of those events that I cherish. It's another opportunity for us to bring the community together, just to support Unified Sports, our student population. And as you can see, I mean, there's hundreds of kids out here.
Our support is really from all the staff and students, just constantly willing to come out for all things Unified. This is our fifth year holding a rain rally, so at this point in time, everyone knows what it is. We have students come from the elementary schools and the middle schools, so they really know what to look forward to when they get here as a student. This is probably our third year of really having strong student leadership. Every year, it gets easier, because students really understand the assignment and know what needs to happen. And then the day of the event, everyone's out here, and we all have jobs and get things done.
So we have Mrs. Torino here on our staff, and she got in contact with all the fire departments for us. And then we promoted the event and told people about what Special Olympics is and their mission. And we were able to advertise it a lot through our school news channel, and then also just word of mouth and flyers all around. And I think we had a pretty good turnout overall. We definitely had a lot of fundraising through our volunteers, who we all fundraised on the Special Olympics website. But then just everyone paying their ten dollars to get in was a great way to raise a ton of money for Special Olympics.
As a school, we do different spirit days that people pay a dollar or two dollars to dress down. We host popcorn sales and cookie sales. It's just a really wonderful day to see, especially at the high school level, kids just outside playing and having fun. It's so carefree.
It really just brings everyone together. We all unite today for such a great cause.
It's just a galvanizing event for the entire community, which celebrates diversity, inclusion, and in addition, gives just a great fundraising opportunity for Special Olympics.
That video was actually filmed by Special Olympics of Pennsylvania at last year's event that we hosted. It is now on YouTube and will be featured at more than twenty-five youth summits across Pennsylvania this fall. We are so proud of the maximum effort our staff, students, put forth for this wonderful recognition and incredible work from our Penridge team. Their creativity, dedication, and collaboration made the rain rally a success, and it's rewarding to see their efforts showcased and celebrated beyond our community. We are also joined tonight by many of the people who make April showers happen. And that's why on our club spotlight tonight, we'd like to recognize our Penridge Unified Program. And if Molly could come on up with Mrs. James and Mrs. Taurus, if you and Jack, you guys want to come up too, we'd appreciate that. Because I know Molly and Mrs. James are gonna speak on behalf of Unified. All right, you can all come up. The one thing I've learned in my tenure here is you do not say no to the Unified group.
First of all, thank you for inviting us to be here tonight. I am Miss Ashlock. I am one of the Unified Club Advisors here at the high school. And I am also a coach for our pilot program that we're involved with. It's a Unified Strength and Conditioning Team that we're currently in. We have a No-Boy Meet on Wednesday against Palisades.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Boyer. I'm the other club advisor, and I'm also the assistant coach for the Strength and Conditioning and Bachi teams.
Hi, I'm Anne James. I am one of the leaders of the Penridge Unified Program here at the high school. I'm also the coach of Unified Bachi and Track and Field. The Penridge Unified Program consists of sports, youth leadership, and inclusion opportunities that span from the classes we offer to activities we run. Our program is fueled by passion and the drive to provide meaningful inclusion to our athletes and buddies. Whole-school engagement is a pillar of our program. We exceed the standard by hosting frequent events. Just this past weekend, we held our Unified Night at the football game. Our student entrepreneurs were able to set up their stands. Our youth leaders passed out swag to those who came by our table, and members from TPA served as game captains. Being a part of Unified has given students opportunities that they never thought they would have.
Since joining Unified, I have made many new friends, and I was given an opportunity to travel to Minnesota for the U.S. Games. I enjoy being a part of it, and I can help others in the great fun thing.
Hi, my name is Molly Taurus. This is my second year being president of Unified, as well as my girl Riley over there. Being a part of Unified is the best thing you can do throughout high school at Penridge. I'm very unbiased. Being a part of the Unified Club has given me great community, as well as most of my favorite people. And then it's also helped me to realize what I want to do for the rest of my life and be a go-to special education and be a special ed teacher. So thank you so much for your ongoing support of Penridge Unified.
That's a difficult group to follow. But on Tuesday, October fourteenth, Mrs. Malloy, our librarian, took a team of students, a team of five students, to the Sales University to compete in an ethics bowl. It was the first time our school participated in any event of this nature. And I came, and impressive third-place finish. So I'd like to take a moment and ask Bailey, Chloe, Serbie, Ben, and Lexi to come on forward. And I think Lexi is just gonna explain a little bit about what an ethics bowl is, because I didn't know what it was either.
So as part of the Ethics Bowl, we looked at an ethical case study in which we considered whether a college should implement AI in their admissions process. We were trying to determine what would be profitable, as well as ethical. And it was overall a very valuable experience for us in that we got to examine a real-world ethical dilemma in a business setting and create a twenty-minute business proposal declaring our stance. And then at the competition, after moving on as a finalist, we got to adapt our presentation to incorporate new information in a very short amount of time before presenting. And then we also got experience defending our position by answering questions from a panel of judges. And in the end, we got feedback from college professors at the University of the Sales. So overall, it was a really rewarding experience for all of us.
What was your stance?
We said that AI should not be used in the college admissions process.
What that group didn't know is that the Dean of the Business Department, who sponsored that, sent me a handwritten letter just quantifying how impressive our students were. Now, they were really looking, I think, to continue building a relationship with Penridge, but it just struck, I mean, it was a handwritten letter from the Dean who oversaw that program, and was just very complimentary towards you guys, so congratulations. On additional note, I'm gonna be celebrating some other types of highlights coming from the high school. What I wanted to briefly just speak about is how the high school has expanded our use of Five Star, which is our digital hall pass system. So last year, we leveraged Five Star predominantly as just a digital hall pass, but as you can see by the graphic that's up there, we've expanded that into multiple different forms this year. We've been monitoring, we brought how the students are actually using it, and actually, every student needs to swipe in and swipe out of school at this point. We've also added digital badges, which is a component that if students have approved releases, now nobody can say, "Hey, we can just go out to lunch if they want." We actually have record, and all of the security and all of the staff can look it up, and it's part of their profile on their digital pass. Also, we use that for clubs and activities, so as individuals are attending events, we can actually monitor their attendance, and we're building that into a whole-school-wide celebratory event as we move forward. However, what we're most proud of is that for our homecoming dance, and many of our student council members were here, we actually used a Five Star as a digital ticketing system and processed over 1,200 tickets at the dance, and I know Molly, you were happy about that, where we were able to track all 1,200 of that attendance in a very timely and efficient manner. Like, we moved away from having tables set up where kids had to check in, and you had to like do it literally, we were using phones and just swiping people in and out of the dance, and it was 1,200 kids over that three-hour time period, so it was actually quite impressive. But speaking of celebrations and operations to that end, I also just wanted to briefly touch about that impact on our overall attendance, because if you were to compare our attendance rates at the high school from last year to this year at the same time, we have seen an increase in our average daily attendance. It's actually up almost two percentage points, which doesn't sound a lot, but from an attendance standpoint, is a monumental number. Additionally, I'd also just like to briefly speak about how that impacts our overall disciplinary issues. So we speak about that in terms of non-reported events versus reportable events, and essentially, the easiest way to think about that is minor events versus major events. But what we've seen is a decrease in 64% of our overall non-reportable offenses, so that moves from a number of somewhere around 256 incidents, has transitioned down to 93, as well as major incidents moved from like 33 to 14 in the same time period over the year. Why do I bring that up in a meeting like this? Because that is a celebration of our staff's dedication, of our administrators' dedication, but also to all of our students who are working together and developing the culture that we wish to build and develop here at Penridge High School. So for that, I wanna thank you, and I wanna pass the mic now over to Mr. Thomas, who has some other people to celebrate.
Thank you, Mr. Keddie. Thank you, Dr. Varios. Well, we did it again. Once again, the Pennsylvania Art Education Association has honored the Penridge School District as an outstanding visual arts community for the '24-'25 school year. This recognition celebrates our district's commitment to cultivating and sustaining a strong, high-level visual arts program for all of our students. A thriving arts program does more than just teach creative skills, it builds critical thinking, problem-solving, and collaboration, while empowering students to express themselves every day in the classroom. And to celebrate this achievement, we invited some of the people who make that happen. If I could have all of our K-12 art teachers and all of our student artists who showed up tonight. And that doesn't mean that you're the best student artist, it means that you have been in art class. I would like you to come up, because we have lots of things for you to hold for a picture. We're gonna talk about that in a second, too. But yeah, we wanted to honor all of you tonight for your commitment to the visual arts education opportunities for all the students in pre-K through 12, and we also wanna showcase what you do to help create art in our schools. The art teachers were asked to help us create something, they had to do something pretty hard. We asked them, last year, to pick from all the art pieces that they see every day and pick just a handful to be part of our first-ever Student Art Celebration Showcase. These 16-by-20 frames that you see in front of you, and some more, are filled with exceptional artwork created by our students in all 11 schools and will be hung in the lobby of the district office in a few weeks, as well as the boardroom in the district office, so they can be seen and celebrated by our staff and community, and this will be an annual celebration showcase. So please give your hands together, put your hands together for our teachers and our art students. Thank you so much. That's perfect. That's awesome. Alright, right here, guys, that's great. Thank you so much, right here. One, two, three. Congratulations, once again. And finally, over the past month, Penridge, through the work of our reliable and newly-activated content creators in all of our schools, continue to be the most visible and active educational brand in the region, outpacing every regional school district and even surpassing the digital presence of major universities, as you can see. We're posting three times more frequently than our peers on Facebook and social media because we're building consistent engagement and community pride through real student stories, just like you hear during the celebration periods of our meetings, and just like you hear every day in our schools. We're highlighting our athletics, we're highlighting classroom moments, and people are genuinely connected with it. This matters only because social media is today's main window into who we are. For families choosing districts and where to raise their families, alumni staying connected, and future staff deciding on where they wanna work, every post that we create shapes public perception, strengthens trust, and amplifies our success stories. In short, Penridge isn't just keeping up, we're leading that narrative. We've become the model for how a public school district can dominate digital storytelling with authenticity, consistency, and heart, by showing what our kids, our staff, and our programs can really do. Thank you very much for your opportunity to show all of this, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Ms. Serena, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Varios, for your report, and also to Mr. Keddie and Mr. Thomas for the outstanding recognitions. We will now move on to our student liaison's report, Zoe.
Thank you. So this past two weeks, two weeks ago, we entered a very exciting week here at the high school. We had our homecoming week, which the whole week, we had a spirit week with different outfits and dress-up days each day. Then on Friday, we had our homecoming parade, starting at Booth Elementary School and working its way down Seventh Street to get to the high school. We had a ton of clubs involved in that, the marching band, and we very appreciated all the community that helped us with that. Then Friday night, we had our Pink Out Game, which is a very exciting game for us, as we get to raise money for breast cancer awareness. Following that, our Pink Out Game, we also had that helicopter cameo, which was very exciting for all of the people there. Coming soon from our Pink Out Game, the money that we used to sell shirts and various fundraising throughout, selling bracelets and bake sales that week, donation will be going towards Grandview for breast cancer research. And then culminating in the week, we had our homecoming dance on Saturday, which was very exciting. Mr. Keddie talked briefly about how we used Five Star to check everyone in there. Huge help to all of us, made things a lot smoother on the student council side. The dance was very exciting, it was a lot of fun, we had a high amount of attendance. Looking forward to November, on November 19th, we are tentative hosts for the Bucks IU Student Forum. So Student Forum is a group sponsored by the Bucks Intermediate Unit, which a bunch of high school student council members, we send two juniors and two seniors from each of these councils, and we meet once a month to discuss the various events that are happening in schools, and to discuss issues that are prevalent in high schools. I had the opportunity to attend this past month, in September, for our first meeting, which was hosted at the Bucks Intermediate Unit, and there we talked about various issues that are happening in our high school, and ways that we can help and support these. So some of the issues that we were discussing were drug and alcohol abuse, teen gambling, healthy relationships, and homelessness on teens. And from these issues that we discuss and brainstorm at these meetings, we form subcommittees for current full outreach programs that can help other people in the community and schools around Bucks County. We also had, last week, on Thursday, we had our PSATs at the high school. All juniors and seniors attended to take the PSATs, not juniors, juniors and sophomores took the PSATs, seniors are taking their SATs. So that went very well, I know myself, I think I did good. We would like to highlight our high school's sports playoff seasons, our girls' varsity soccer is doing extremely well, as well as our boys' varsity football. Other teams that made their playoffs for this year is the girls' varsity field hockey and both boys' and girls' varsity water polo teams. Marking Period I is coming to an end very soon. I know it went extremely quickly for a lot of people, so November 3rd is end of marking period I, so with that, we have our day off afterwards, which I'm personally excited for. But that is all for this week, thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Zoe. Next is public comment. Each commenter is allowed three minutes. According to Policy 903, public comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation is limited to three minutes and should be directed to the entire school board following the announcement of your name and municipality. Under this policy, the presiding officer has the authority to warrant or stop a public commenter who in violation of this policy occurs. First, we have Cecilia Wirt.
Hello, my name is Cecilia Wirt, I'm in 11th grade. As a student in the Unified Program, I have a concern to share with you. I have several palsy and must use my walker or my wheelchair to get around. There are other students just like me at the high school. I want the same opportunity as my peers to be able to be independent throughout the school, but still keep the school safe. Daily, I use the ramps and the elevators to get to my classes, although the elevators are often out of service for long periods of time. My friends and I request for you to put in handicap automatic doors with push buttons at the pool, and main entrance, gym, and bathroom, so that my friends and I are able to open doors for ourselves during the school day and for our after-school activities, since we won't always have someone there to help us. This would make the building more accessible for us. If you would like to ask me any other questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me at the high school. Thank you for your time, support, and attention to our concern.
Thank you so much, Cecilia, for that. Next, we have Mr. Thomas Traeger.
As they're walking up, can we just make sure that we address them at the next facilities committee meeting, please? Put them in the agenda to talk about.
Good evening, Tom Traeger, East Rock Hill Township. As we begin another budget cycle, I want to speak to an opportunity that strengthens academic excellence and protects taxpayers, the Bloom Board Grow Your Own Teachers Program. At the Personnel Committee meeting, we heard how this program directly addresses two major challenges facing Penridge and districts across the country, a shrinking teacher candidate pool, and the rising cost of earning a degree. The message was clear, we cannot afford to sit back and hope qualified teachers show up at our doorstep. That's not a plan, it's a gamble, and it's a costly one. Bloom Board gives us a proactive, fiscally responsible strategy. This program removes the two barriers that prevent talented staff from becoming certified teachers, time and cost. By providing our aides and support professionals a pathway to earn their degree and certification while working here, we invest in people already committed to our schools, our students, and our community. And let's be honest, over the last several years, Penridge lost far too many dedicated teachers. That turnover took a toll on students, families, and morale. I appreciate that this board's current leadership is prioritizing rebuilding our staff, restoring stability, and investing in retention. The Grow Your Own Model is exactly the kind of forward-thinking solution that demonstrates the commitment, because if we don't create our own pipeline, we will pay more later, more in recruitment, more in turnover, and more in emergency hiring when vacancies are left unfilled. And when staff turnover rises, students lose consistency. Consistency is one of the strongest predictors of academic success. When teachers stay, they learn their students' strengths, needs, and learning styles, and that directly improves achievement. This program directly supports academic excellence by developing teachers who already know our students, our buildings, and our district's culture. It increases retention, something this board has repeatedly set in values, and it reduces the revolving door of staff, which we know leads to stronger relationships, better classroom management, and higher student engagement and performance. It also is a smart financial decision. As I commented during the Finance Committee meeting, last year's budget required nearly a 4% tax increase, in part because critical investments were delayed for years. When we avoid long-term solutions, we pay more later, and by "we," I mean us, the taxpayers paying more later. Responsible leadership means planning ahead, not reacting when we reach a crisis point. Approving Bloom Board isn't spending more, it is spending smarter. Redirecting funds we already use for course reimbursement into a structured, results-driven program with accountability built in. This is fiscal responsibility. Penridge deserves leadership that plans for the future, not leadership that repeats the cycle of short-term thinking and long-term expense. And tonight, we got a chance to show the community what proactive, student-centered, taxpayer-responsible leadership looks like. This is one of those rare decisions where academic benefit and financial benefit truly align. Bloom Board strengthens our classrooms, supports the people already serving our students, and protects taxpayers for higher costs in the future. Thank you.
Next, we have Crystal Coslin.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Crystal Coslin, and I'm a parent of Nina Coslin, an elementary student whose bus stop was moved from our home to a location near the post office. I'm here tonight because despite two months and several, by Sep. 20th, I need documented emails to the district, no action, and taking what has become a serious student issue. The post office stop has not been used for elementary students in more than six years because families have long considered it unsafe. These things often alone, unsupervised, and other students assigned to this stop get driven to school. The stop is not visible from our home, and in poor weather, he has to wait on the post office porch or in the post office, an area where we have heavy truck traffic and distracted drivers along with other... an area where we have heavy trucks, truck traffic and distracted drivers along with other visi- visi- visibility um dilemmas. For six years, Nate saw at our residence, works safely, smoothly, from our front porch, I can supervise him, monitor the traffic and ensure his boarding safety without crossing the street prior to the stop, the bus stopping. Nothing about this arrangement caused incommutes to the district or any drivers. I was also deeply disturbed when early in my conversation with the board, I was told to make agreements with my employers so that I could be there with Nate in the morning. Please understand that comment was inappropriate, if you're relevant. As a parent, my employment was none of this district's business and I did make those agreements five years ago during the pandemic so I could be there with him. I hope to have their personal employment used against me, my child was placed in daily danger. It's both disrespectful, unacceptable, it's unquote, it's equal concern that the district has suggested that I've, they may respond once more and then block further communication from me. As a parent, I think legitimate safety concerns is inappropriate and unprofessional and is considered with the district's duty to maintain open dialogue with students' welfare. My goals, they can't be unsafe, I respectfully ask the board to, I respectfully ask the board to direct the Transportation Department to reinstate Nathan's stop. This is not a request for special treatment, this is a request for safety, consistency, fairness to a young child who's probably afraid to go to this stop. Please do the right thing and act swiftly to correct this before something tragic happens. Thank you for your time, attention and give it its due to student safety.
Thank you, that is the end of public comment. We will be moving on to the consent calendar. Motion to approve consent calendar items A through I.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Now moving on to curriculum, Mr. Mark Holcomb.
Thank you very much, good evening everyone, thank you for being here. At this month's Curriculum Committee meetings, we continue discussions around curriculum renewal cycle and proposals, provisions and renewal processes. We received an update on the elementary science program and implementation of the new SEAL standards. Discuss the upcoming continuance, discontinuance of the Making Meaning Program Penridge has been using and heard a proposal to adopt the Being a Reader Program for grades three through five to support students' transition from learning to read, to reading to learn, and directly addressing areas of struggle noted on recent standardized assessments. Received an update on discussions of how best utilize Bucks County Community Colleges' funds to maximize student benefit in dual enrollment courses. Uh, finally, we learned more about the continued progress on the planned middle school shift to block scheduling with the potential launch in the twenty seven, twenty eight school year. Uh, we have one item before us tonight for a vote this evening. Uh, it is the motion to renew Being a Reader for grades three through five and I so move.
Second. Questions or comments?
I have a quick comment. Um, I will not be supporting this tonight, I'm all about um the foundational skills instruction, the comprehension strategies. It's nothing new to those that have been coming to the board meetings for these past four years that I've been on, but I just really struggle with the explicit social skills instruction, um, where it talks about, you know, fostering students' growth as responsible, caring and collaborative people. I believe all those things are super important, I just feel as a parent and as many families in the community that have the same values as I, as I do, that's just where I should all, to support this, so I won't be doing that tonight, thank you.
I'm sorry, struggle supporting what part?
So it says that there's going to be explicit instruction in social skills as well as fostering students' growth as responsible, caring and collaborative people. That's directly from their website, and although maybe there's no, um, nothing to worry about, I just, as a parent, I just, I would like them, I would like the programs to stick to the foundational skills, comprehension strategies, because as a parent, I feel like that's my job, review those other pieces, not the schools.
Interesting, okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions or concerns?
I have to say, I do support us encouraging our students to be responsible, caring and collaborative people, thank you.
Encourage is different than explicit instruction in those things.
How?
If you're developing lessons and you're having and you're putting students under an umbrella, which I've discussed this before, when you're putting everybody under an umbrella, there are some students that might struggle with certain skills like that and then that should be a conversation that you have with families and you sit down and say, hey, we want to work on some of these strategies with your student in school because this is what we're seeing. When you build it into the curriculum and that every single student under that umbrella is going to be getting those things, that's where I see there being a problem in it. And that's just my own personal opinion.
Can you give an example, I'm not sure, like if, if it's helpful for one student, why wouldn't it be helpful for all?
Because again, those are, those can be different values and beliefs that uh different families use to what they're teaching. And, I mean, you're sending your child, your child goes to school for a hundred eighty days a year and then they're with a teacher each year and then they go on to the next year and they don't always know your student or your child. And again, like, I don't, I, I just don't feel like, I feel like we should be teaching them to comprehend, to uh be reading and all different strategies and yes, there's going to be different things that come up, there's going to be conflict, all those things, but I feel that that should be more on an individual basis, not underneath the umbrella of doing it all in one and it shouldn't be a part of the curriculum.
Could you give an example?
I mean, again, I don't have a specific example, I just don't think it should be taught, what, it's not even, they don't even, that's a good point too, they don't even give specific examples of how they're going to be teaching them. So that I actually would feel more comfortable if there were explicit examples of what it would look like.
Is there questions or, oh, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
No.
Motion passes. We thank you, Mr. Mark Holcomb.
Our, I guess, uh, our next Curriculum Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, November third.
Thank you so much, we are on to Facilities with Mr. Kaufman.
The Facilities Committee met on October thirteenth and we discussed uh the yearly approval, board has to approve bus stops or routes and stops. So that is the entirety of the Facilities Committee meeting, so looking for approval of bus routes and stops.
Second, perfect, are there questions or comments?
No questions or comments?
Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
So the next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, November tenth.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, on to Finance, Mr. Wirtz is not here, however, I will be getting some help from Mr. Dohr. First is the approval of contracts, so motion to approve contracts A through J. Do you have a second?
Second.
Questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. Next, we will see the motion to approve the Rico Managed Print Service Proposal, Master Lease Product Schedule, Variable Payment Addendum, Equipment Removal Authorization, Gold Level Service Agreement, and Statement of Word for Paper Cut Operating Software for sixty-three month term beginning January first, twenty twenty-six. Pending review and approval of all documents of the district solicitor. The product schedule includes sixty-six fleet MFPs at a monthly cost of nine thousand five hundred twenty dollars and eleven cents for months one through six and nine thousand thirty-four dollars and fifty-one cents for months seven through sixty-three, totaling five hundred seventy-two thousand eighty-seven dollars. Copy cost includes black and white MFP at point zero zero thirty-three per copy, color MFP at point zero three zero six per copy for the first six months and black and white MFP point zero zero thirty-six per copy, color MFP point zero three zero six per copy for the remaining fifty-seven months. Say that again? Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? So I did, I did have something um written for those of you who are interested. The reason we're doing it is due to the obsolescence of a key software component on our print and copying and faxing machines. We've decided to renew our contract with Rico. They have performed excellently over the last years, uh five years and the new contract will actually cost us less than the previous contract. If that is the only comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Right, motion passes. On to the approval of twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven Act One Accelerated Budget Opt-Out Resolution. Motion to approve the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven Act One Accelerated Budget Opt-Out Resolution not to exceed the Act One Index of three point five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? I also wanted to add a comment, no one else did, um, that we'll be voting and passing the Act One Index Opt-Out Resolution tonight. Opting in would allow us to raise taxes above the Act One Index, which is three point five percent this year. However, we're committed to making sure schools are run efficiently and as efficient effectively as possible and showing that we won't need to exceed the Act One Index.
No, that's not for tonight.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Moving on, the next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, November tenth. We continue, next is Personnel, Ms. Petiskey.
Good evening, we held a Personnel Committee meeting on October the thirteenth and some of the topics we discussed were the upcoming Fall Job Fair and the recruiting that our HR team has been doing at football games. We also talked about our co-op program where we have, with the tech school, we have one student being onboarded in our nutritional services group and two more students in the pipeline, which is excellent to hear. Uh, we also talked about a benefits timeline for upcoming requests for proposals and renewals with a variety of health benefits and insurance. So the first item that we'll look for approval on is a motion to approve the contract for the Educator Advancement Program through Bloom Board, which we also discussed extensively at the meeting and you heard comments on tonight.
Second, questions or comments?
Okay, so I just need, um, I feel like just a little bit of clarification because there's some emails today and then as well as public comment tonight on this specifically, so I just want to make sure, I was not at the meeting, but I want to make sure I know you guys discussed, discussed it extensively. But when you look in the contract, um, it basically, what I'm zeroing in on is it talks about the Teach Start and it says, these twelve credits offered to students will, with zero college credits or for whom the community college partner has deemed to need these courses per transcript review. Um, what I'm, what I believe that is, is kind of like dual enrollment? Like, you know how like students now could potentially take courses through Bucks at a, a smaller price? So that first part, is that similar? But the partnership would just be with this group that we're recruiting tonight would help the student figure out which college to get those twelve credits from? Is that, like for that first bullet, there's three bullets, sorry. Am I making sense?
Yes.
For just, sorry. So it's elaboration on that, like this group would help them, sorry, tear.
So there's three separate programs, they offer a program to our students who have dual enrollment and they will set them up with a local college that they will work with um so that they can go through and get their college credits to have a teaching certificate. There's also a program um where they can support our current paraprofessionals that work in the district. Um, they will again, based on whether or not that individual has a bachelor's degree or if they have an associate's degree, align them with a program where they can be set up to um obtain a teaching certification.
And that's when they would like be working and be able to do it during? Now what about the student teaching piece of like, get with, how would that work within this program?
That would all be within the classroom, um, where they are getting their credits, so they would not be in the actual college classrooms, um, like you would see traditionally in a college. They all, their, their whole program would be within the classrooms in Penridge, so they are learning the Penridge way while they are student teaching.
Okay, and then the, the third one would be like for them to get their instructional one, so that'd be after they have their bachelor's and then, okay. So I feel like we, I, I get the paraprofessional piece, I think, is huge, that it's helpful because a lot of times when you're an adult, it's difficult to go back and get your teacher cert and student teaching and, you know, because that's a full-time gig and then to not get paid during that time, so I feel like that is a huge uh barrier for, you know, adults that want to go back, I totally get that. I feel like we, we do offer the dual enrollment piece and then the, like already, which I feel like we haven't started, I know this is like just another opportunity. And then the post uh bachelor's for the intern, that's like if they, again, they would be working here already and then they would again, would go, which we, we do offer that as well, like besides if you take this piece out of it to help, well no, because I guess it would be.
We currently offer tuition reimbursement.
Yes.
Um, through the district, but this allows them to have their in-the-classroom experience count towards their certificate that they would be receiving. So they would not have to attend school at night, this is just a way that they can use their in-the-class experience.
It's, that's right, I struggle because the meat and potatoes of this is awesome, but obviously as we all know, these past years and, and continuing, everything's been so politically divided and then, um, you know, with this uh program, like some of the things, like, you know, the DEI is a hot topic that, you know, years ago, we had a big community come out and, you know, that whole uh conflict or controversy, that we want to call it, so it's difficult, I guess, to, I wish they would just like stick to the meat and potatoes of, of all those three things. I think that sounds great, again, it's just something I struggle to um get behind, but thank you.
If I, if I may address that, um, I think you're referring to the um part of the contract where it says promote equity. So, when the term equity appears in Bloom Board's contract, it refers to ensuring fair and practical access to professional learning and credentialing, not ideology or preference. In my professional opinion, there is a difference between equity and equality. In educational terms, equity means reducing structural barriers that prevent qualified individuals from advancing within the same rigorous standards. This includes aligning time, cost and mentorship structures so that working professionals particularly, RTAs and PCAs and emergency certified teachers can compete in a Pennsylvania Department of Education-approved coursework without compromising their classroom responsibilities. Programs like this expand human capital, foster retention and build long-term instructional capacity. Participants still must meet the same academic and performance benchmarks required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. What changes is not the standard, but the support to reach those standards. In short, this is about educational opportunity and workforce sustainability, giving committed Penridge employees equitable access to advancement while upholding the professional excellence that our students deserve. Let me provide some concrete examples of how I perceive equity. Earlier in my report, I recognized the Torres family in Taborah Farms. The Torres family went out of their way to build a ramp so that students who were in wheelchairs could board that hay wagon and join their peers on the hayride and visit the apple orchard. Had they not done that, those students would have been, would not have had access. That single act embodies both equity and inclusion. It's equitable because it removed a physical barrier that would have otherwise excluded certain students from the same experience as others. The standard, which was the participation in the hayride, remained the same, but the access point was adjusted to ensure fairness. It's inclusive because it intentionally created a shared experience where every student, regardless of mobility, could learn. regardless of mobility, could learn and enjoy the day together. Inclusion is about belonging, not separation, and this was a genuine act of belonging. In educational terms, this reflects what we strive to do as a district, identify barriers that prevent participation, and find creative and practical solutions that allow all students to be part of the same meaningful learning experiences. And so let me get back to Bloom Board. A paraprofessional who has worked in Penridge classrooms for years may have the talent and experience to become a certified teacher, but lacks the time or financial means to complete the traditional university program. Through the Bloom Board partnership, that same employee can earn their PA certificate while continuing to work full-time, using classroom artifacts and real instructional experiences to demonstrate mastery. The academic expectations remain identical to a university program, but the pathway is more accessible and affordable. This is equity in action, maintaining the same professional standard, like that ramp to the haywagon, while removing barriers related to cost scheduling access. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have two position approvals next up on the agenda, starting with our Director of Technology, but before we move into the vote, I know Dr. Barrios had a few words to share.
I do? One second, I need some more document here. Thank you, I'm sorry for the delay. So I'd like to hopefully introduce our Director of, our new Director of Technology, if you could please rise. So our school board, in a few moments, you will have the opportunity to vote on the appointment of our next Director of Technology. I'm delighted to recommend Mr. Daniel Lazoche for this important role. Mr. Lazoche brings more than twenty-five years of experience in educational technology leadership, most recently serving as the supervisor of external services for the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. Over the course of his career, he has led major infrastructure upgrades, implemented one-to-one device programs, and advanced strategic technology initiatives across both instructional technology and operational systems, positioning him well to strengthen and modernize Penridge's technologic, technology landscape. He is a proud Penridge graduate, Mr. Lazoche earned his bachelor's degree in information systems from Temple University. His deep professional knowledge combined with his personal connection to our community will serve our students and teachers and staff exceptionally well. Mr. Lazoche lives in Sellersville with his wife, Christine, Christine, I'm not sure if you're here, I can't- Back to office, okay, hi Christine, and their daughters who attend North Middle School. We are pleased to have him with us this evening as we welcome him back home to Penridge, pending a vote. After that, I'm going to, you can have a seat, Mr. Lazoche, thank you. Mr. Ken Erman, if you could please stand. Earlier on the consent calendar, the board approved the retirement of West Rock Hill Principal Mia DiPaolo effective February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-six. This evening, the board will be asked to vote on the appointment of Mr. Ken Erman as the new principal of West Rock Hill Elementary School, effective the following day, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-six. I strongly and confidently make this recommendation. Presently, Mr. Erman serves as the interim principal of West Rock Hill Elementary. Mr. Erman joined the Penridge School District in two thousand twelve, serving in multiple capacities that reflect both, both his versatility and dedication to students. His experience includes teaching fifth grade at Siler, serving as a STEM teacher at West Rock Hill, working as a secondary instructional coach, and stepping in as the interim principal of several of our elementary schools over the past three years. Throughout his career, Mr. Erman has demonstrated a steady hand in leadership, a passion for student growth, and a deep understanding of our district's values and mission. He holds a bachelor's degree from Shippensburg University and a master's degree from Bratz College. He and his family are proud residents of our Penridge community. We're excited about the future of West Rock Hill Elementary School under Mr. Erman's leadership, pending a vote, and look forward to the positive and lasting impact he will continue to make. Mr. Erman is joining us tonight, as you know, tonight along with his wife Stephanie and their children, KJ, Lindsay, Leah, and Olivia. So, you can have a seat, Mr. Erman.
All right, do we have a second for the approval of Director of Technology, do we have a second?
Second.
Perfect. Questions or comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
Okay, and then I'll make a motion to approve Kenneth Erman as West Rock Hill Elementary School Principal, effective February seventeenth, twenty twenty-six, at a salary of one hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety dollars.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I would just like to make a quick comment of Mr. Erman, I just want to thank you for your commitment to our students, I remember when you were at Siler as a teacher, and then as a STEM, not just at that school, but just the interim of you being the principal of the other elementary schools, I really appreciate, I'm really excited that you're going to be my principal.
Hopefully. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
Congratulations. Next, we have a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Penridge School District and the Penridge Education Association regarding staff transfers and vacancies.
Second? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
And final item is a motion to approve memorandum of understanding between the Penridge School District and the Penridge Educational Support Professionals Association regarding the compensation rate for custodians temporarily assigned to fill in and perform building facility manager duties.
Is there a second?
Second.
Chris, do you second?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
And then finally, the next personnel committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, November tenth.
Thank you, Ms. Petiskey, next up is policy, Mrs. Rash.
Thank you, we had our last policy meeting on October sixth. On tonight's agenda, we have approval for first reading of PSD policies A through C listed below, eight oh five, emergency preparedness and response, eight oh five point one, relations with law enforcement agencies, and eight oh five point two, school security personnel.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing on, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
Thank you, our next policy committee meeting is scheduled for November third.
Thank you, Mrs. Rash, next up is IU. Mr. Words, do you give me something to say in regards to the IU?
A major focus this year was acquisition and fit out of the former Pearl S. Buck Elementary School in Lower Bucks. This lease increased IU capacity by twenty-seven classrooms. IU continues to expand, mistaking new classroom space in the Upper Bucks area. This is due to the increased demand for specialized education services. Attached to the agenda, there's more information on the new facility, information on the IU apprenticeship program, and a few highlights from this month's board meeting. The next IU board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November eighteenth. Up next, from the Upper Bucks County Technical School, is Mr. Cormac.
Thank you very much, real quickly, talk about community engagements, we had Career and Technical Education, CTE Expo, which is held on the ninth of October, we had five hundred participants come to the, the opening, re, Reading Aviation Expo two thousand twenty-five, UBCTS is participating in a two-day event to connect students with industry representatives from organizations like NetJets, Embry-Rille, Royal Aerohonautical University, and a couple other different type of drone companies, so it was an interesting afternoon with the, with the UBCTS staff. Upcoming presentations, Dr. Herrera is our executive directors on the panel of the World, PA World Language Roadmap, and spoke at the American Association of University Women Doylestown Event. We had over two hundred business and industry members attend our JOC, or OAC meeting, and we also had other activities, food drive, and Angel sharing the warmth initiative. This is the one that I really liked to, to report on, because it just kind of, just tells you really what the tech school is all about. UBCTS continues to sow strong momentum in placing students in hands-on career experiences, reflecting in its mission to connect education to opportunity. Co-op and career launch programs, there are currently seventy-two active co-op students, including six students enrolled in the career launch program. Recent placements, sixteen students have been placed in a co-op program from diverse classes, including culinary, electrical, auto tech, construction, CLP, diesel, dental, healthcare. Students were placed in businesses such as Bovard Haas, Yates Electrical Service, Thompson BMW, Stairwork, St. Luke's, H and K Group, Clover Contracting, he has two students, and several others. Participate exploration, UBCTS is actively expanding its network, having a contract with employing partnership opportunities with the following organizations since September, Penn Color, Roger James Woodworking, Coax, B and G Manufacturing, Pioneer Dentistry, and one that I really feel near and dear is Penridge School District, so that's great. And Dr. Barrios has been instrumental, instrumental in getting the tech school and the high school to work together, so, Dr. Barrios, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Some important dates for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, our open house is Thursday, November thirteenth, and the spring JOAC meeting is ba, is on March eleventh, two thousand and six, and that is my report, thank you. Our next UBCS scheduled meeting is November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, thank you.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Cormac, next up is the Penridge Old Area Coordinating Committee, Mrs. Rash.
Thank you, PACC met on the twenty-third, so just last week, the representatives from the various ministry municipalities, they are talking about successful community days, new developments that are going on in their communities, as well as some issues with water, tables, and easement, et cetera. Some highlights are the seniors center in Silverdale, if people aren't familiar with it, it is a really strong organization, they do quite a bit for the seniors in our community for things like bus trips, they have a pool league, they do art, they have computer help, you name it, and between now and the end of the year, there are a couple of big fundraisers that are very critical for their financial health, so you don't have to be a member to attend the fundraiser, so you should check it out, it's in Silverdale, right by the Dunkin' Donuts. Another thing that they noted was that night, the military helicopters that would be flying through and landing at Parage Airport, if any of you felt that, that was pretty wild, and they were doing some tactical operations right above us, literally felt like it was right on top of your house. And then finally, I did want to give a shout out to Mr. Thomas, Dave Thomas, because unsolicited feedback from all of them was how much they enjoy the updates to the community on what is going on in our district, on social media and all the other avenues too, that they are reading them, and they really enjoy hearing about our students and our schools, so I wanted to make sure you heard that. The next PAC meeting is scheduled for January twenty-second of next year.
Thank you, Mrs. Rash, on to all the business, do we have any? Okay, hearing on, on to new business.
So I just want to ask that we add to the next finance committee meeting, there's been a few districts around the county and throughout the state who have adopted another resolution that is a withholding of cyber fund, charter funds, for twenty-five percent. As everybody knows, we're mandated to fund the cyber charter schools, which are public education institutions, and yet we receive funding from the state, so as we're not receiving funding, as it was noted, that today we're at nine million dollars, that we've lost between thirty-six and forty thousand dollars in interest. I think to kind of take a look at that program, I mean, it doesn't have to be right away, but I'd like to at least get the discussion rolling. Twenty-five percent of the three million dollars that we give to charter schools would be seven hundred fifty thousand dollars that we could continue to earn interest on, since we're not getting the money from the state, and the other things, just to put it back out there for any districts that are listening about the resolution for protecting the public education, as we saw the gutting of offices of special education programs, you know, there's a lot of panic out there, I've talked to parents with children in special education who are worried about where the IDA, IDEA money is coming from, so to just put it back out there, that wasn't a hysteria moment for our district to pass that resolution, we all saw the writing on the wall, and I think it's time for districts across, at least the Commonwealth in the country, to stand up and say enough's enough, so, like I said, I'd like to have that cyber charter resolution put on the finance committee.
Thank you. Is there any other new business?
I support, I'd be interested in that also, we need more info, I guess.
I too would be in support to get more information, I know I definitely have questions, we have the, if anyone else would be in support of at least putting that on the agenda?
Definitely.
Okay, next is public comment? We don't have any public comment, all right. Announcements, executive sessions were held on October sixth, twenty twenty-five, and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters under section seven oh eight, A one eight, as well as agency business conference under section seven oh seven. The next board meeting is scheduled on Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.